The following program is a production of Ho'ikee Kauai Community Media.
Aloha and welcome to this special series of interviews with your Kauai County Council candidates. I'm Lexi Jones, the Vice Chair of Ho'ikee Community Television.
And I'm Mark Periello, President of the Kauai Chamber of Commerce. We're honored to bring you these conversations, giving each candidate the opportunity to share their vision for our island's future.
Today, we'll be speaking with Fern Holland, who's eager to share her ideas and plans for our community. These interviews are an important part of our democratic process, giving you a chance to learn more about who's running and why.
Our hope is that these conversations inspire you to engage in the process and to vote. Every voice matters and your voice is crucial in shaping the future of our island.
So let's dive in. Please join us as we welcome Fern to the conversation.
Thank you.
So Fern, I am the lucky one to ask you the first question.
Fabulous.
It is a super softball. Please tell us, tell our audience rather, about yourself and why you're taking on the kulianna of leadership in our community.
Yeah, thank you, Mark. So, you know, I was born and raised on Kauai and I love my home. I graduated from Kapua High School and went away to university where I studied environmental science. I always intended on bringing that education home to help give back and serve my community. And it's really my goal in running for office in really a way of service to my home and to the island that I love and the community that I love. You know, I've watched many of my friends have to leave. I've, you know, watched many of my classmates and friends that I've grown up with struggle with not being able to afford to live here. I struggle with being able to afford to live here. I've watched so many friends struggle with drug addiction and abuse issues. And I see so many things in our community that need to be improved. So many things that our county and our state could do to increase the quality of life for our local families. And I'd just love to be a part of helping to, you know, use my commitment and use my education to give back and to help benefit our community.
All right. Thank you. We're going to be able to talk about a lot of those issues as we continue the conversation.
Absolutely. And thank you for speaking so wholeheartedly as well. Moving into a heavy hitter of a question, as we all have it facing us, as you mentioned as well, and that response to Mark. Kauai faces a significant challenge in providing affordable housing for its residents. The demand for affordable and workforce housing continues to outpace supply while rising housing costs and prevalent of off-island investment exacerbate, excuse me. While rising housing costs and prevalence of off-island investments exacerbate the issue. The community has been exploring various strategies to address these challenges, including increasing the supply of affordable housing, providing rental assistance and supporting community land trusts. Here's your question. Given the ongoing housing crisis on Kauai, what specific strategies would you prioritize to increase housing affordability? And how would you work to implement these strategies as a member of county council?
Thank you, Lexi. I think this is probably the largest issue we face. Collectively, it seems like everybody agrees, you know, affordable housing is our biggest issue. I think we need to tackle it in every way that we can. I think it's, it's not just a one path to the solution. There's multiple things that we have to do. We definitely have to increase supply and we have to look at ways that we can bring in federal funding, state funding to do so and whatever it looks like. I had the incredible honor of being the archaeological monitor on the Lima Ola site and getting to watch that project move forward. I think those kinds of projects are absolutely part of the solution. I think we have great organizations like PAL and Habitat for Humanity that do incredible work and helping to partner and support that with land opportunities and acquisition and, and, you know, pushing those processes forward. I've noticed that we have these new rules that allow for like additional ADUs, for example, but they've been very hardly used.
Yes.
And I think a lot of that comes from problems that might stem more from the permitting process. And I've learned a little bit myself over the last few years about how difficult some of the planning permit process timelines can be and expectations can be. And there might be really feasible things that the county council can do to change that, the legal process that leads to these permits and really gets us where we need to go and gets people feeling confident that they can invest in an ADU, that they can move forward with some of these additional opportunities to increase housing. Absolutely. Increasing supply is one of the largest things we have to address. I think, you know, the rental support and the subsidies and those things for families absolutely needs to continue as well. We really have to do everything that we can to keep local families on Kauai. It's very, very difficult and we've seen such an increase in costs since the COVID that the whole, the whole thing really needs to be supported however we can. We also need to address our infrastructure, you know, I mean, like I also am struggling with trying to figure out, how do I afford a septic? You know, put in to even fix my house that's like falling apart, you know, and navigating those permitting processes and navigating the septic and the infrastructure needs, you know, I support working on the county financing stuff like SUER and moving that into areas that would allow for, you know, to address some of those needs for the septic. So, you know, I think it's a, it's a multi-pronged approach. It's one of the very first things that I would really buckle down if I get elected and, and start to look at and categorize all of these things. I'm very organized, so I like to, you know, sit down and go through it. Okay, how do we increase supply? How do we support families in existing opportunities? You know, how do we address the infrastructure needs? And I think it's, it's, yeah, it just takes really hard work and people that are committed to figuring out the solutions and how we bring those federal and state funds in to really benefit Kauai, I think is a big role of the county council.
Absolutely. Thank you.
And so I have a follow-up question. One of the challenges, I think, with affordable housing and workforce housing is the not in my backyard mentality. How would you sort of help bridge the gap between our need for housing and the folks who really want to see Kauai stay sort of as it has been, right? Sort of same size, rural, all of that?
Definitely. I mean, I feel the same way. I was born and raised here. I don't want to see us overdevelop our home. I get nervous about some of those things. I think we need to think really clearly about what we want and we need to be very strategic about how we implement it. I think increasing density in core areas like Li Hui, where we have more jobs is a natural way to do that. You know, I don't want to see massive rural sprawl where we, we take out our agricultural lands. I, I'm actually very concerned about the loss of agricultural lands to development, particularly high-end expensive hotel development and vacation rental and short-term, you know, holiday development. I don't really believe we should be allowing any development on Kauai that's not affordable housing at this point in time, given the situation that we're under, yet we see, you know, expensive fancy designer homes for offshore still moving forward while we're really scrambling trying to get affordable housing. I think the other thing is really creating a mix diverse opportunity for that, you know. There's, we need to create housing in areas where families can still have backyards, you know. And I hear a lot of locals, they don't want to move into a tiny little apartment, you know, with their kids or whatever. But we also need to have higher density living and opportunities for people that do and people that, you know, want to be closer to say the core of Li Hui or, you know, their job or whatever it is. And I think being smart about where and how we develop that land so that we don't just open the gates to massive development that sees us lose the, the history and culture that we all love about Kauai. I think it's, it's, it's kind of going to be a difficult thing to navigate. And I think that's what's really important about having people that can, you know, sift through these things and tease through. How do we make sure that we're not, you know, opening the floodgates to the kind of development either we don't want to see or we don't want in that location? And how do we really move forward to increase affordable housing in a meaningful way? And I think it's a delicate balance, you know?
Thank you, Fern. So moving on, the next question is about economic diversification. So Kauai's economy, as you know, has long relied on tourism, which leaves the island vulnerable to economic downturns as we saw during the pandemic. There is a growing need to diversify the economy to create more resilient and sustainable economic opportunities for our residents. Potential sectors for diversification include agriculture, technology, healthcare, renewable energy and the arts. So here's the question. What is your vision for economic diversification for Kauai? And which sectors do you believe hold the most promise for the island's future? And then I have a follow-up as well.
Okay. Yeah, no, thank you for that question. I think it's a really important conversation also. I, you know, I'll start by saying that I don't necessarily think that tourism is going anywhere. I think it's quite clear that that's, you know, a big part of our economy. I do think it's critical that we diversify for many reasons, like you mentioned. You know, there's the possibility that that slows down for a multitude of reasons. But I think a lot of what the focus should be around tourism is really shifting the focus of what tourism looks like for us, right? We're hearing a lot more conversation about regenerative tourism, about ecotourism. You know, in my degree at university where I studied environmental science, that was actually part of the conversation about ecotourism. There was whole courses on, you know, how do we facilitate environmental-based tourism? And I think there's some things that could be adjusted to make tourism more sustainable and also more beneficial directly to local families. I feel like a lot of locals feel like the only way that they tap into the tourism market is their, you know, service job or is their, you know, desk job at Hertz, you know, where a lot of this money is leaving Kauai. I think we need to really think outside of the box about how to change that. How do we allow local families to better tap into the tourism market and directly receive money and, and income from, from these tourists that are bringing huge amounts of money without just it being a minimum wage job or a barely survivable job while most of the money goes to big corporations offshore? And so I think there's a lot of stuff that we can work on in tourism, but we absolutely need to diversify beyond tourism. And, you know, agriculture is my favorite. As the Director of Fair and Sustainable Food Systems for HOPA, that's my passion. It's my work. I've worked in the agricultural circle of transforming agriculture and, you know, looking at the impacts of industrialized monocrop agriculture while also trying to transition us into like a more regenerative model of truly food-producing, sustainable agriculture systems. And so that's a passion of mine. It's my day job. It's what I've worked for, you know, well over 15 years now on. And I'm really passionate about seeing that through. I would love to see us expand agriculture in a way that's healthy for our people, healthy for our environment and further amplifies all the opportunities, even around tourism, to bring money in and to expand our economy. And it's also a survival thing, you know, we import 80% of our, 90% of our food, depending on the numbers, every month. And that's a security issue. It's a homeland security issue. It's a survival issue. It's, you know, food security is a really, really big concern for us. We're the most isolated landmass in the world. We need to produce our own food. So I'm really, really passionate about that part of agriculture. And I think there's huge possibility for both local food production and export markets. I mean, we saw yesterday even with the chocolate expansion, you know, there's so much possibility. We have year-round growing conditions. I mean, there's a reason that large plantation interests, that big biotech interests have come to Hawaii and utilized our agricultural land for so long. And that's because we have ample water, great land, you know, year-round growing conditions and a, and a society that has largely, you know, built on the back of agriculture. So I think there's a huge benefit there. I think there's also great opportunity for stuff that you mentioned, tech and educational opportunities, entertainment and, and the arts. There's, there's so much. And I think finding the balance and just being thoughtful about how we go forward in a way that really sets us up for the future. And how do we set this up in a long-term sustainable way that spreads our, you know, opportunities across? So we're not dependent upon one thing. We're not limited to one thing, but that we're still, you know, not just giving away our natural resources in liquidation for the betterment of money, right? So how do we do all of those things while preserving our culture, while preserving our way of life, while preserving our country lifestyle? How do we do all those things in a way that, you know, makes local families benefit rather than offshore corporations? I mean, that's my priority.
All right. Are there any specific ideas that you have about how to go about that?
Which one?
You get to pick, you get to pick, right? You know, right, so, right agriculture, right?
Right.
How do we get to a place where we're more sustainable and less dependent?
Right. Okay, great. So with agriculture, I think there's a lot of opportunities, particularly within the state, to help push for tax breaks, exemptions, support for farmers and expanding farmers to, to produce. I think there's holes in the system that need to be patched. And what I've learned with amazing opportunities like food hubs and different kind of middlemen to help between the producers and the consumers and help things go to market, I think is really, really important. The more that we can fill those holes, you know, we're, we're lacking infrastructure, the slaughterhouses for meat production, you know, packaging, storage. I think figuring out ways and systems to provide for the market, what the market needs in a local thing, like in a local way, is totally the goal, but how do, how do we get there, you know? And that's the kind of stuff I work on every year in the state legislature. I'm a lobbyist during the state legislative session for agriculture stuff. There is a huge amount of network across Hawaii working to expand agriculture. There's a great network of people that have great ideas. Every year we implement great measures into the House and the Senate to see very few come out the other end, right? But there is so much opportunity. I also really love what Maui did with creating a Department of Agriculture on a county level. I think there's a huge benefit to just what, filling that gap, using that department as a way to bridge the gaps, fill things in, bring it in, you know, drive it home. How do we drive these goals of 50% increased food production? How do we drive that home without a real rigorous plan?
Right.
And I think that's all of our responsibilities at all level of government, both for the food security issue and for the economy and for the expansion of, of the economy. I think there's so many holes that can be filled just by really sitting down and coming up with solutions and meeting consumers and markets where they are. And then going back to the farmers and supporting them and being able to make that market, you know? A farmer is not going to grow something he knows he can't sell. And there's a certain level of, we've shaped our agriculture around tourism and we've shaped our agriculture around a handful of things. And we saw that after COVID, how, how difficult that was for a lot of farmers. And really just, I think, bridging those gaps is the most important thing we can do.
All right. Thank you, Fern.
Really appreciate that. Okay, moving on to question number four, which is focused on climate change and environmental sustainability. Right in your wheelhouse, girl. Kauai is particularly vulnerable to impacts of climate change, including coastal erosion, extreme weather events and threats to natural habitats. Addressing climate change and promoting environmental sustainability are critical for the island's future. Kauai has explored various strategies, including coastal protection, renewable energy adoption, waste reduction and sustainable agriculture. Here's your question. How would you address climate change and promote environmental sustainability on Kauai? Please, please describe one specific project or initiative you would champion as a county council member.
Thank you. I am very passionate about environmental protection.
Yes.
It is why I went to school. I studied for seven years in Griffith University in Australia. I have a Bachelor's of Science with triple majors in fields of environment, marine biology, wildlife management and environmental science. And really throughout my, you know, studies and professional career, this is a huge amount of my focus. It's like, how do we address our, our environment? My, my deep passion is really the protection of our native ecosystems, which we're seeing collapse and further pressured by climate change. The marine environment is really where I started, you know, falling in love with the ocean, growing up here on Kauai, wanting to protect marine wildlife, watching the global collapse of ecosystems, particularly our marine ecosystems. I feel very deeply, it's, it's something that does drive me. I think there's, you know, there's a lot of great organizations that are already, you know, driving forward really good environmental policies and practices. I, I have Compost Kauai. I don't know if anybody else does that, but Compost Kauai, I've been a member of them for the last year or so since they started. I think, you know, addressing our waste is a big part of that and I love that they're part of the solution in that. I, I think, you know, unfortunately, while there's a lot of fun things I'd love to talk about when it comes to, you know, how do we protect our beaches? How do we protect our shorelines? How do we restore our ecosystems? Unfortunately, we're staring down an incredibly, incredibly big problem with this landfill and waste.
Yes.
And we are going to be really adding to our climate impact if we have to start shipping all of our waste overseas or offshore, back to the continental United States. And I think we really need to address that. And solutions like composting and, and working to divert waste away from the landfill is, is a, is a huge project I would love to take on. You know, I've worked on some of the largest landfills in Australia. I've done water quality monitoring around some of these massive landfills and I've, I understand how they're structured. I understand how they work and, and how they fill. And I really think that my education and background would help to help us drive that process forward, which we've been needing for decades. You know, we're decades into needing a landfill. Where, where's our landfill? And what are we going to do in a couple of years when, when that closes? And I think unfortunately, from an environmental perspective, that's one of the largest issues that we really face. I think there's a lot of other ways that we can really increase our resiliency. You know, a lot of people know that for the last four years, I've been really working to try to come up with an alternative solution for Waialua Nui Ahoanu, what's commonly referred to as the former Cocoa Palms Hotel, which is an incredible historical, cultural site and environmental site that's just got so much environmental and ecological services to give back to our people and our, our land.
Yeah.
I think managing our water and looking at systems like, like Waialua, which is the wettest place in the world, which has incredible, you know, water flow and movement through old irrigation systems that really should be restored for water flow. How do we manage our coastal areas holistically? And how do we build resilience? Because, you know, I, I was exposed to a lot of stuff in my university degree about climate change adaptation. You know, I took atmospheric chemistry when I fell in love with chemistry, which I never thought I'd do, ever. But, you know, I learned so much and then there was so much conversation about how communities around the world are adapting, like climate change adaptation. How do we adapt to the changes if we can't stop them, right? And a lot of that goes back to my core principle things that I really want to fight for, like agriculture. You know, agriculture collectively is the largest negative impacting thing to the climate globally. Industrialized agriculture has been identified as the biggest impact. Agriculture is also the biggest solution. It's, it's the thing that extracts carbon out of our environment. It's the thing that, you know, limits our climate footprint by producing our own local food. And there's a whole mirage of benefits to, to our environment if we're engaging in truly regenerative agriculture practices. And so it is the solution in a lot of ways. So that being my big passion kind of overlays very much so with that environmental fight and why I'm, I'm even in the conversation about agriculture, right? So I think that's definitely part of it. I could go on and on about this topic, but I'm going to stop.
No, it's good. Thank you so much. We can definitely see that the passion is very there and you have the skills and knowledge behind it. So we appreciate that.
My turn?
Yes, sir.
All right. We're, we're almost done.
Okay.
So the next question is about transportation and traffic congestion. So while visitors contribute to traffic congestion on Kauai, the surge in traffic when schools returned, resumed in August underscores the impact of resident commuters on the island's transportation system. In addition to infrastructure improvements, Kauai has been exploring various efforts to reduce traffic congestion, such as expanding bus services, developing safer bike lanes and encouraging walking through improved sidewalks and pathways. However, our island's rural nature and the dependence on cars present unique challenges. Turn the page. Question. What solutions to ease traffic congestion on Kauai resonate most with you? And how can we reduce reliance on single occupancy vehicles and expand alternative transportation methods that are accessible and appealing to residents?
Thank you, Mark. I think this is something that everybody on Kauai gets frustrated at some point. We're like, we live in such a rural environment. Why is the traffic so bad?
Yeah.
I think there's a lot of little things that we have to cut away at, you know? I think the bus, like you mentioned, absolutely. I know we're struggling very greatly to get bus drivers. So I think that seems to be one of the limiting factors we're dealing with is the lack of being able to find bus drivers. I mean, we, we need to address that. We need to figure out what that is. How do we entice people to get the qualifications to be a bus driver? How do we, you know, resume, there's now no buses on Sunday. But there's also all the conversation about all the people that aren't going to use the bus, right? That, like you say, you know, that, that addresses a certain market of people that need transport. How do we also improve our, our access for kids to get to school? You know, I know that there's been huge problems with the state this year, just, you know, doing the same thing, getting the drivers and the funding to be able to ensure that the students even have buses, you know? So, so absolutely, we need to look at those kinds of things. I think we need to look at the problem areas. I mean, it took a really long time to get that additional lane in Waialua. I think over like a decade, 15 or 20 years or something it took us to get.
Very long time.
You know, at least that, I mean, as long as I can remember, I think since I could vote, I've been, I've been talking about that conversation. So I think there's, you know, there's those kinds of things and figuring out how do we support those projects that are really state projects? Cause the highway is obviously a state Department of Transport. How do we encourage, you know, maybe carpooling? I think we need to think outside of the box and look at other communities. One of the things that I think we should really do as a small island community is look at other places around the world where small communities have tackled these issues. How have they done that? You know, the park and ride conversation that's happening?
Yeah.
You know, you, I think more support for tourism off the roads definitely is, is a solution. Even though, yes, we have the, the residential required, you know, boost in getting kids to and from school and, and all that. And I think, you know, we have to look at it collectively. I also think there's, you know, I think it's, it's important for us to look at alternative routes and have those kinds of possibilities open for extreme situations, like when the highway gets shut down because of a fatality, when there's a storm, when, you know, the, the bridge gets knocked out because, you know, because there's problems.
Yes.
All of these kinds of things, we have, we have to also look at for the safety. I think we need to have routes that are available, even if they're not always available. And, and how do we, you know, ensure that that's a possibility as well? I get very hesitant with, you know, these proposals to build massive highways through the island and, you know, build these massive freeways and stuff like that, because that's not Kauai. And I think real local families and people that are born and raised, or none of us want to really see it turn into a giant little LA in the middle of the ocean, right? And if you build massive freeways, I mean, we know, we know what that leads to, right? So I think we need to think really carefully about how do we address these things? Cause they definitely need to be addressed and how do we do so without losing our way of life, right? And, and I think it, like, a lot of these conversations, like affordable housing, it, it needs to be very thoughtfully meticulously gone through. You know, how do we do this? Is this going to work? What's this going to lead to? And we got to do a little bit of all those things. We need to, you know, invest wherever we can to address the problem areas.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Moving into question number six.
How many questions do we have?
I'm pretty sure seven.
Awesome.
This is going pretty quick. And this one again is right up your alley.
Yeah, it is for sure.
This one is for sure. Agriculture and food sustainability. Girl.
Girl.
All right. Agriculture has the potential to play a larger role in Kauai's economy for providing local food, preserving open space and contributing to economic diversification. However, challenges such as limited infrastructure, general disinterest from younger generations and the need for starting up financially persist. What is your vision for a thriving agricultural sector on Kauai? And what actions would you prioritize as a county council member to support this vision? Please describe a policy or initiative you would introduce to help achieve your vision.
Awesome. Thank you. I feel like we've already talked.
I know, in the best way, yeah.
The answer to this question.
Which I'm fine with that, but.
You could reiterate it with like.
You know, yeah, like I've said, a lot of what I really am passionate about with agriculture. And I think there are great solutions and I work on those solutions every year, like I said, in the, in the state capital, trying to, you know, push through some of these support measures for farmers, some of these opportunities to really like expand into regenerative agricultural. I think we need to address education. We need to help to educate. We need to help to support the younger generation and feeling empowered. We need to make it financially feasible for farmers to farm. And what that looks like, and we have some great examples here locally that we've, we've just all celebrated and talked about.
Yeah.
There's some great opportunities and great examples of what can be done when people really do invest in that idea of truly creating a sustainable, regenerative product that, you know, is, you know, even for export, for local, whatever it is. But there's a, a market for it, right? And I think that's critical. I also, you know, personally, and there's a lot of things I'd like to introduce. I'm not going to give them all away here, but there's a lot of great opportunities, I think, for the county to partner with state agencies to help to finance and support, to help to drive that initiative for the hospitals, the schools to produce local food.
Yes.
By looking at who we already have here, who is willing to expand, what kind of support do they need? And that's why I would really look at trying to introduce a Department of Agriculture, like they did on Maui or a position within the county or some sort of role where we actually have someone dedicated to bridging that, to, you know, closing those gaps and, and figuring out how we work with the Department of Agriculture and how do we work with these statewide organizations that are really creating a major, amazing headway? There's incredible farms throughout Hawaii, Ma'atou Farms, Organic Farms, Anahuahua, an incredible opportunity for people in the community, not just to grow food, not just to be inspired by ag, but to reconnect to Aina, to reconnect to community, to, to heal. You know, they take youth that are struggling, people that might be struggling in the community and they instill a passion for agriculture and in a way that is meaningful to people. And I think it, there's so much opportunity for that kind of work here, you know? I would really love to see us move away from this 150-year mindset of monocrop style industrialized agriculture into something that truly shows the beauty of a mono kolani po. of monocrop style industrialized agriculture into something that truly shows the beauty of monoculani pol, of food production, of the garden island, you know? We have the opportunity to produce a huge amount of food. We could be a food basket for Hawaii, for Oahu. We could be, you know, so much of an agricultural community that is healthy, that is long sustaining, where the money really stays in our community, rather than seeing historically so much of this effort, you know, move offshore. We've seen, you know, large biotech chemical corporations lease our land for a dollar an acre a year for many, many years. We've seen, you know, arguably very concerning practices happen and land used in liquidation with no concern for the future of how that soil and how that land is going to be used. And I think we have the opportunity to switch that to become a regenerative agricultural society that's based on, you know, food production and agro tourism. That's, that's environmentally sustainable, that's ecologically sustainable, and that inspires people to eat locally grown foods. We can grow stuff, you know, that can be shared around the world to a lot of places that don't, you know? I get very disappointed when I go to the store and I see, you know, avocados from Mexico and Costa Rica and, and these things where you're like, the best avocados I've ever seen in my life. Like, why are we ordering avocados from, you know, bananas from Costa Rica? Like, what's going on, you know? Like, and I, I think there's just, again, there's holes in the market that can be filled and I think would make an incredibly big difference to reshaping our agricultural sector and, and really making it profitable and really making it beneficial for communities. Yeah.
Great. Thank you so much.
So we have one more question and then you're, you're closing. So how familiar are you with the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan?
Is that the whole question?
Nope. I'm gonna make this as easy for you as possible, so write it.
Oh, I'm, I'm fairly familiar with it. It's been a couple of years since I read it, but I, I did read through the whole thing a couple of years ago and I, I kind of went through what I like about it.
All right. Well, that's the question, right? What are your top one or two priorities for tourism on Kauai? Especially as they relate to the, the Kauai Destination Management Action Plan?
Thank you. Yeah. So I really do love, you know, the vision of making tourism more beneficial for the community, less extractive, I've heard, you know, referred to it, and really focusing on that ecotourism side of things. So that's something I really appreciate. And I know that, you know, there's been a lot of work over a really long period of time to implement these things in the Destination Management Action Plan and, and what that looks like. And I, and I'm happy to see that happening. Like, we've seen some great signage going in, educational signage. I think all that kind of stuff is great as well. I would love to see a, a real boost in how we support the ecotourism sector, how we create, you know, more opportunities for locals again, so that the money stays here, for locals to be able to tap into the tourism market directly, whether that's, you know, the uncle selling coconuts at the lookout or whether that's, you know, somebody, you know, being able to do tours in some way. Obviously, we need controls and all that kind of stuff, obviously. But I would love to see us navigate pathways for local families to be able to tap into the tourism market and be able to, in, in turn, be able to stay here on Kauai, right? And be able to afford to live here because, you know, they're caught, we're constantly being squeezed out.
Absolutely.
And, and so I think there's the great opportunity to figure that out in a way that also limits tourism to certain areas. I think the more that we can direct our guests and, and help them get there. If you could go to all the main spots that you want to see on Kauai over a three-day period without renting a car, you know, without needing to think, without needing to drive on our roads that arguably are not well established for cars.
Right.
You, you know, we'd have a lot less problems. We'd have less dangerous driving situations with tourists. We'd have, you know, less cars in the road and less traffic. And we'd have our tourists going to where we want them to go, right? And seeing what, you know, kind of managing that. And I think we've seen things like Hayana Master Plan start to do that. How do we cap these areas that are really inundated? And I think that's an important part of the plan as well. And I think focusing on the ecotourism and sustainable side of that and creating those opportunities while figuring out how we corral and, you know, address the footprint of tourism, I think is really important.
Okay.
Wow, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is that your whole question?
That's my whole question.
Oh, Roger. Okay, cool. Just making sure. Okay, to finish us up for today, is there anything else you would like to share with the viewers and the individuals watching today's interview?
I'm thankful for the opportunity, guys. I, I always enjoy talking with you guys. I appreciate, you know, the opportunity to share a little bit about me and what I do. You know, I'm very active in the community. I, I feel like I should share like my website and know that people can reach out to me. So like, you know, I'm available, I'm available at votefern.com. All my information is there. And you're absolutely able to reach out to me anytime. I am an open door. I'm very approachable.
Yes.
Despite some rumors, I'm very, very approachable. And I, you know, I'm happy to talk story. People call me about all kinds of things. So, you know, I'm, I'm an open door. Feel free to reach out. I have a lot of information on my website, a lot of information about who I am and why I do what I do and where I stand on some of these core issues. And yeah, I'm really honored for the opportunity. I'm honored for the opportunity to campaign for county council to represent my community. And if Kauai decides that they would like me to serve, I will wholeheartedly serve and invest my heart into the betterment of our island home. And yeah, I just really appreciate you guys and the chamber and Hoike and the opportunity.
Well, thank you.
So thank you for being with us today. It was a true pleasure. It always is a pleasure to talk to you, Fern. And so thank you for your time today. And then mahalo nui loa for joining us today. We hope these interviews give you a clearer understanding of the candidates and the future they envision for our beloved island.
Absolutely. And we'd like to take a moment to acknowledge the incredible support of those that made it possible today.
So first, a big thank you to the Hawaii Crop Improvement Association.
We also want to express our gratitude to the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, our Kauai chapter, for their continued support.
And a very special thanks to Hoike Kauai Community Television for providing the platform to bring these important conversations to you.
Absolutely. And we're also grateful for the Kauai Island Utility Cooperative for their unwavering support of our community initiatives.
And thank you to KKCR, Kauai Community Radio, for helping us reach more of you across the island.
Absolutely. We couldn't have done it without, we couldn't have done this without the Kekaha Agriculture Association, who have been champions of local engagement.
And last, but certainly not least, a heartfelt thanks to Meridian Pacific for their generous support of this effort.
And remember, your voice matters. Make it heard. Be sure to vote in the upcoming election and hope, excuse me, and help to shape the future of Kauai.
All right. Thank you again for watching. Aloha and until next time.
Ahoi ho.
Ahoi ho.